Hafedezan Mananasiduz colleagues. Iminetrentaisinkuna laslaturen Guam is back from recess. When we last left off, we were in the voting file and we are now back into the second reading and I'm going to recognize Senator Sabina Perez on Bill 185-35COR. You are recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I would like to place Bill 185-35COR as substituted on the floor, sponsored by myself, co-sponsored by Senator Luis Munia, James Moylan, Justin Augustine, Amanda Shelton, Mary Camacho Torres, Teletitigui, Kelly Marsh Titino, Regina Bisco Lee, and Jose Pito Turlahi. It's an act to amend and renumber section 70.01 through 70.11 of Article 1, Chapter 70, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, to amend section 34111 of Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, and section 3119A of Part 3, Chapter 3, Title IX, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, and to repeal sections 34112, 34120, and 34205 of Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, and section 3116B and C of Part 3 and Part 6, all of Chapter 3, Title IX, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to establishing the Protecting Animal Welfare and Safety, or PAUZ Act, also known as PUCAUZ Law, and increasing civil liabilities and criminal sentences creating new criminal charges for employers and individuals, and repealing previous protections for landowners from trespass, and amending previous protections from animal attacks, to place it in the third reading file and I would like to discuss.
Senator Perez, can we first please motion to accept the substituted version?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the substitute version, to accept the substituted version.
Of Bill, of Bill number?
Of Bill number 185-35COR.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the motion to accept, 185-35COR is substituted on the floor. Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Perez, on the motion again.
Sidozmasi.
To place?
Oh, yes, I move to place Bill 185-35COR as substituted on the floor, to the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Senator Perez, you may proceed.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker. Bill 185-35, the Protecting Animal Welfare and Safety Act, or PAUZ Act, is a comprehensive overhaul of Guam's animal cruelty laws. I would like to thank my co-sponsors on this measure, Senators Munia, Moylan, Sinagustin, Shelton, Torres, Titigui, Marsh Titino, Bisco Lee, and Jose Turlahi. Bill 185-35-35 is a response to the increasing number of animal cruelty cases seen in our community. It aims to strengthen our laws to properly protect animals while providing the tools necessary to educate and rehabilitate offenders. To accomplish this, the PAUZ Act focuses on three key areas. The first of these three parts extends from 70.10.1 through 70.10.12, and it's here that the bill defines and prohibits different forms of animal cruelty. The second part, section 70.10.13, comprises activities that occur before a trial, such as seizure, procedures, and protection orders. The third and final parts are section 70.10.14 and section 70.10.15, which deal with activities that happen after a trial, such as sentencing provisions, restitution, and civil actions. I will now briefly go through these sections, explain their importance, and highlight these changes made following the public hearing for Bill 185-35, held on February 10 of this year. And I would like to thank the Office of the Attorney General, who we worked with closely, as well as our legislative legal counsel, who put many countless hours of work and nights into this in order to resolve some of the issues that were highlighted. In section 70.10.1 of the PAUZ Act, my colleagues will find definitions portion. The definitions in the sections have remained largely the same as current GCA in terms of impact. The changes that are made are intended primarily to improve clarity and consistency. For example, GCA regularly makes reference to possession, so Bill 185-35 provided a definition for the term. Additionally, under the requirements of minimum care for domestic animals in subsection G5, the PAUZ Act ensures proper ventilation, temperature, and lighting at night to allow a pet to sleep. GCA also uses the term livestock and suffering without defining them. Following the public hearing, definitions of both were added. The former livestock was pulled from section 62104.2 of Chapter 62, Title V, GCA. A definition for caregiving agency was added as a means to ensure consistent language to improve existing references to animal shelter, animal care agency, and humane society. Returning to the top of the list, the definition of animal was updated to align with the more commonly used definitions of the term that have been tested around the country. The current definition in GCA includes fish and birds, but it is nevertheless flawed as it does not identify a wild animal, nor state whether or not it is comprehensive of everything that is not own, domestic, or livestock. As such, other animals such as insects, shellfish, worms, and spiders are arguably included under the current GCA. While the PAUZ Act also exempts people for proper disinfestation of pests, it nevertheless helps to fine tune this definition in order to avoid creating unintended prohibitions. With this bill, the definition is clarified to include non-human mammals, birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish. Additionally, since the public hearing, legal counsel advised that we specify the domestic animals and livestock are intended to fall under this umbrella definition, so that language has been added as well. Next, in section 70.10.2, animal neglect is a civil offense. Under current GCA, all animal cruelty violations were either misdemeanors or felonies, requiring court appearances and prosecution. Bill 185-35 recognizes that the lowest levels of animal endangerment, such as inadequate shelter or water that does not injure an animal, are best addressed with education and simple ticket. These are not cases that should be sent before juries, as such a new animal neglect section is included in the bill as a minor civil offense. Section 70.10.3 covers animal abuse that results in injury or worse. If an animal is injured, it is a misdemeanor. If an animal is seriously injured or killed, it is a third degree felony, and this matches our current GCA. But with the wording recommended by the AG's office to make the section more clear, the defense portions that exist in current GCA are struck out and moved to a new section, 70.10.11, of this chapter for easier reference. Section 70.10.4 covers aggravated animal abuse, and will apply only to the most heinous of actions, such as torture of an animal or premeditated killing of an animal with ill intent, and this will be a second degree felony, the highest penalty under the PAUZ Act. I should note that these tiers of animal abuse were the sections that underwent the greatest changes between the introduced version of Bill 185-35 and the version before you today. Thanks to the assistance of the AG's office, the new language is more efficient and easier to understand, and closely follows the structure of Guam statutes dealing with human assaults. It otherwise maintains the same structure and penalties as introduced in the bill. Additionally, the substitute bill leaves out escalated penalties for animal abusers who have a history of domestic violence. I believe this is an important issue, but given the complexity, it's best addressed in a subsequent bill. Next, I want to draw my colleagues' attention to page eight of Animal Banishment. An authority to enter premises are struck from GCA. The former is simply being reordered and lightly edited for language and appears in 70.10.8 and page 14. The latter is removed and replaced by more thorough language regarding seizures and property rights in section 70.10.13 on page 20. The language of dogfighting current GCA is expanded to include all forms of organized animal fighting, with the exclusion of cockfighting. This is done because new forms of violence, such as dog versus hog fights, are beginning to appear around the country, and we should clearly prohibit this practice. The PAUZ Act explicitly states that this not apply to cockfighting, both here in the legislative intent and in the defense portion that appears in section 70.10.11. On page 12, section 70.10.6 outlaw sexual assault of animal cruelty, sorry, sexual assault of an animal. Currently, Guam has a dubious distinction of being one of the few places in the world where bestiality is legal, but this is no laughing matter. Studies show that over 50% of animal sex offenders have a criminal history involving sexual abuse of children, possession of child, pornography, and domestic violence. Studies also show that animal sexual abuse is a number-one indicator of a person who sexually abused a child. This is why animal cruelty laws are important, because if we are able to identify and stop animal abusers early, we're also able to protect the most vulnerable people in our community. Section 70.10.7 makes it unlawful attempt ear cropping or tail docking at home, which is already against law in current GCA as an animal abuse. However, this section makes it clear that a veterinarian performing such procedures or a person following good animal husbandry standards when caring for livestock are exempted. And to be clear, we protect veterinarians and allow tail docking and ear croppings to continue, because we want these procedures to be safely done by professionals. Section 70.10.9 and 70.10.10 on page 14 deal with hitting an animal with a car or leaving an animal in a hot car, respectively. Both of these sections are in current GCA. However, Bill 185-35 moves them both into our animal cruelty statutes to improve clarity and consistency, and additionally, the language for failure of a motor to render aid to an injured animal was improved. Under current GCA, the law applies too broadly. A person must pull over, report the death of a chicken, for example. The PAUZ Act limits it to cats, dogs, and livestock, excluding chickens. Section 70.10.11 lists the exemptions in which the above prohibitions do not apply, including hunting, self-defense, cockfighting, and killing of invasive species, to name a few. Section 70.10.12 clarifies that euthanasia must follow the standard industry practices, and this language has been circulated among local veterinarians, and we do not anticipate problems with it. Section 70.10.13 lists pre-trial provisions, and the term was changed because in the introduced version, it was called pre-conviction, which presumed guilt, and we wanted to ensure that innocence, someone is innocent before proven guilty. It's here that the bill creates proper procedures for going onto a private property and confiscating and impounding an animal, all of the while still protecting the rights of defendants. Both the AG's office and the prior administration have noted that this language is lacking in current law and leaves authorities at a disadvantage when trying to enforce the law. The reporting requirements of subsection A were made optional, and subsection B, law enforcement was amended to add a new subsection two that recognizes the newly created volunteer animal officer program. Subsection C was previously called impalement, but under legal guidance, the term was changed to seizure, which was deemed more appropriate. This provides clear process and protections for seizing an animal while protecting the property rights of a defendant. The substitute version of the PAUZ Act also includes a new subsection A through D under subsection four on page 21, clarifying the information should be provided to an individual following seizure. Subsection D was also in both the introduced and substitute versions of the bill, and it's an important constitutional protection to allow a defendant to maintain ownership rights while paying reasonable cost of care for an animal while it's in a government care. Subsection E provides mandatory protection orders for those charged with felony crimes. In the introduced version of the bill, there were additional sections related to liens on animals and termination of an unfit guardian's interest in an animal. Both of these sections were removed, the former because concerns about financial impacts upon defendants, and the latter because concerns about constitutional property right protections. The third and final section of the bill deals with sentencing provisions and civil actions. It's here that the law promotes education and community service, as well as mental health evaluations and treatment for serious violators. Restitution for victims is also addressed, and rights are provided when a person can pursue civil action in cases of wrongful death or injury of an animal. Subsection B was amended following the public hearing to clarify forms of treatment, and that if a court determines a defendant is indigent, the government of Guam may provide access to government-funded or government-contracted service providers if available. Subsection C continues to provide education materials to those violating the law, but it now reads that such information may be provided online if appropriate, because such materials are readily available through national organizations. This should eliminate the burden placed upon Department of Agriculture. Subsection D ensures that abused animals forfeited following a guilty ruling, and subsection E allows that a court, that authorizes the court to ban a person convicted of a felony animal cruelty statute from owning or having custody or control of an animal for a minimum of five years for a first offense and 15 or more for a second offense. The introduced bill had an animal abuser registry in this section, and the substitute bill removes this registry, as recent research shows that such registries are ineffective in preventing animal abuse and result in excess cost and time for government to maintain. Lastly, sections F and G, which provide for restitution of costs incurred, are largely the same, save for minor edits. Section 70.10.15 is nearly unchanged, save for changing negligently to criminal negligence. This section ensures the victims of abuse are treated consistently should they seek civil actions they are entitled to under current law. The PAUZ Act is a product of extensive work with numerous stakeholders and legal professionals. It follows the structure of our current laws, but potential loopholes have been closed, and language has been modernized. Many of the changes outlined in this bill were informed by the Animal Legal Defense Fund, Model Law, which tracks best practices for animal cruelty laws across the country, ensuring that proposed language is backed and tested. But I wish to emphasize that PAUZ Act does not blindly adopt statutes without carefully considering Guam's unique characteristics. Extensive effort was made to work with stakeholders and government to pick and choose specific elements and craft policies that effectively meet our island's needs. Overall, the PAUZ Act takes a comprehensive view of addressing animal cruelty. It clarifies different forms of abuse, improves the methods of seizing abused animals, and ensuring for their care, and provides for education, therapy, and treatment to aid in rehabilitating offenders. I thank my colleagues for their time and support. Sidozmasi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak? Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sina Masimaska, Lou. And I appreciate the author of this bill for her thoughtfulness, for working with the AG's office, with many of us senators, and others, to get a lot of input, to contemplate these, what I would say are somewhat complex issues, especially dealing with safety and ownership and so forth. I believe it's been over a year or more that she has been working away at this. She has implemented suggestions, been very open to addressing concerns, and so I greatly appreciate that. I just want to mention, and she may have addressed it, and I may have missed her addressing of it, so in section four, where it has subsection 3411, persons attacked by animal, and then subsection 3119, persons attacked by pets or animals. I'm just curious about the difference between the two and the importance of having both of them in. They do both mention being attacked by a pet or animal, so if she could just describe those two subsections to differentiate them for me.
Senator Perez?
Okay, yeah, yes, I yield to the question. So, we didn't, basically, the differences basically is the title of the section. So, one is attacked by animals, and the other one is attacked by pets or animals. I think what's important here is that the affirmation that self-defense is allowable under law, and so rather than repeal these sections, the purpose was to amend it to ensure that self-defense is a proper defense.
Senator Titino?
Sidozmasi, yes, that's helpful to understand, and I see that there's consistency there. So, I had just wanted to understand the difference, because as I mentioned, they both deal with pets or animals, and some of the actions, they're consistent, which is good, but it helps me understand why both sections remain. Sidozmasi.
Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Pito?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to proffer an amendment on Bill 185-35COR, and that is to place back number, you know, line 20, page 21, number eight, cockfighting in a manner, and at such time, the places, the place are authorized by law. And I did talk to the...
Senator Turlahi, I'm going to take a moment's recess to see the uploaded version. A moment's recess. Iminetrentaisinkuna laslaturen Guam is back from recess. Senator Pito, if you can read your amendment one more time?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Page?
On line 20, page 21, to amend the bill to read, number eight, cockfighting in a manner, and at such time, the place are, the places as authorized by law.
Places as are authorized by law. On the amendment, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
I don't see it on the drive.
It should be there already. Can you give me the... Madam Clerk, if you can give me the number, I will share it with my colleagues. Madam Clerk, if you can give me the number, I will share with my colleagues. If you can refresh, Senator Perez, do you have it? It is... You have it? Bill 185 JPT L 20 P 21. Can you see it?
Yes, but what section is it applied to? I see the page number, but if the section number could be included?
Page 21, line 20. Colleagues, we're going to take a moment's recess. The amendment is showing on the amended version, and we have to correlate it with the substituted version. A moment's recess. ...
Ymina Chantai-Sinko, Nalas Lutur in Guam is back from recess. Senator Pedro Terlayi, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to withdraw my amendment.
On that motion, without any objection, seeing or hearing none?
And I would like to proffer another amendment.
Please speak the amendment.
Line six, page thirty-one. To read section eleven, cockfighting is officially recognized as a cultural practice. Nothing herein shall be interpreted to criminalize, punish, or prevent cockfighting as a cultural practice under the laws of Guam. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
And then you also have section twelve, which is the effective date, and section thirteen is the severability clause.
Yes.
On the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Clint Raja, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to rise in support of this amendment. I think it's a good amendment, just to make sure it's clear and that the intent of the law is clear, that we don't want to do anything to change the local laws on Guam with reference to the allowance of cockfighting pursuant to Guam's local laws. So I just want to rise in support of the amendment, because I think it's good to make sure it's crystal clear that this law would not make cockfighting on Guam illegal. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, are there any objections? Senator Perez, I recognize you on this amendment.
This is Masim, Madam Speaker. You know, I rise in support of the efforts of this author of the amendment, and I understand his concern that, you know, just wanted to make sure that it reinforces what the bill has stated, that it does not apply to cockfighting, and I just want to support his efforts to ensure that, you know, his concerns are allayed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez, on the amendment. If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. On the main motion, thank you, Senator Pedro Terlayi, on the main motion. If there no one else wishes to speak, Senator Clint Raja, I recognize you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a question for the author, if the author would yield.
Please state the question.
Sure. If you'd just allow me a moment to pull up the bill real quick. There's a certain section in the bill that I have a question on. Just give me a moment, I'm trying to find. There is a section here, seventy-ten-seven, under bodily alterations, disablements, or removals. So this section would make it unlawful for any person to remove or permanently alter, disable, or cause, or procure to be removed, or permanently altered or disabled, any part or organ or the function of any part or organ of an animal, except as necessary for proper and lawful veterinary care, population control, or good animal husbandry, provided that population control or good animal husbandry is under the supervision or instruction of a licensed veterinarian. My question for the author is, would this section here prevent dog owners or dog breeders from being able to dock tails and ears of dogs?
Thank you, Senator Clint. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Yes, I will yield to the question, Madam Speaker. And, yeah, just in the opening statement, it was very clear that it does not prohibit owners from doing that, just that it has to be done under, using good animal husbandry practices. So just to ensure that when it's done, it's done safely.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Raja, does that suffice?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So with that, I do have some other questions still for the author, if the author would yield.
Yes, if you could state his question.
State your question, please. I apologize, the air con is overthrowing the voice, so if you can just speak into the mic, Senator Clint, I would appreciate it, I apologize, I can barely hear.
Sure thing, no problem, Madam Speaker. Okay, so for, actually, if I could remain with this question. So for animal husbandry, is that for the author, is that what's being used as the allowance for the docking of tails or ears? Is there like a definition? I just wanted to be clear and be sure. I know she mentioned, the author mentioned that it was stated in the opening statement, but I just want to be, I just want to make sure that in the language itself, it's clear that people will be able to dock tails or ears for certain breeds of dogs that require it.
Thank you, Senator Clint. Senator Perez, would you like to yield?
Can I get a brief moment?
Yes, I'll give you a brief moment's recess on this one. Yes, I'll give you a brief moment's recess on this one.